Jim, Jim, Stan and Kerry. Wow. Kermit, you're alive and well there on the computer?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I don't know how to make myself visible here. I'll work with it.
That's okay.
Here it is.
So that, that is three of us and that technically makes a quorum. So we're calling that to order and we're going to get rolling. I don't have a chair report. Other than I will have some things to say in regards to the skate park. And it looks like Mr., I've got some reports from Mr. D'Enzo too, but we'll wait till that comes up in the meeting. So that being said, we'll go right into the Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch Report. Go right ahead, Kitty.
All righty, um. We have a lot of programs between now and the end of the year. We have six docent walks scheduled, including one family walk. Um, and a three-part stargazing program. Because the stargazing programs are so weather dependent, it's kind of handy to have the three dates because one, two or three of them may be canceled because of cloudy skies. Uh, one of the programs we have can are scheduled is the Thanksgiving, post Thanksgiving tree planting. So the Saturday after Thanksgiving, we'll be doing that. Everyone is welcome. It's a lot of fun. We're gonna have an auger, so we're gonna pre-drill holes, so it won't be that hard in our trees that we've been growing. Look really good. Uh, we have a pop-up scheduled, um, off the ranch on November 12th. Trail work has been going gangbusters. With work on all of, almost all the forest trails, the Creek to Forest Trail, the Santa Rosa Creek Trail. Lot of chipping. Thank you, Carlos, for supplying the chipping. Uh, there was a main street cleanup on September 27th. So between, uh, the bank and Highway One or, or south to Highway One, our volunteers cleaned up. We have deployed counters on the ranch to count the number of visitors at some of the key trailheads. So that'll be the first time we have any actual data on how many people use the ranch besides the number of mutmits that are concerned, which is our only quantitative measure that we have at this point, which is uh, like around ninety-six thousand mutmits a year are used. Um, I want to thank Carlos Mendoza for organizing ice plant removal on the bluff. And he's going to show you some of the spectacular progress that's been done there. Fiscalini Ranch, Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch Preserve is very pleased to be in a position to, um, pay for that work. But the work is done under the direction of Carlos, the ranch manager. That's, that's it.
Question.
Go get it, Adolf.
Okay, what, what is the status now of dogs on the ranch? Is that enforced leash law now or what?
There is a rule that is in place and an ordinance that needs one final vote from CCSD. That all dogs outside of the dog park must be on leash.
Okay, Kitty, thank you. Any other questions for Kitty? I see Mr. Baringer in the audience. Is anybody capable of bringing him in to the, uh, table? Carlos?
Uh, I can't. You're the host.
Oh.
So if you go over to his name and you can promote him to panelist.
Carlos, you know everything. Awesome. Boom, there he is. A photo of Jim from fifteen years ago. Fabulous. All right, uh. There we go. Uh, any other, Jim, do you have a question for Kitty or was your hand just to get back to the meeting?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, awesome. Great to have you. Thank you. All right, Skate Park Cambria Julie is not with us this month. She has, uh, sent, uh, a little email to me to let us know a few things. Uh, we are moving in the right direction on the park. Current fundraising number is at five thirty-two. We'll be learning more in November as, uh, Ray and the CCSD will be, uh, reporting on county feedback. And they're launching their fourth quarter fundraising and more to come on that. They'll be participating, I think, in hospitality night, uh, come December. And I think she said she got one more thing going on also, but the skate park moving forward. Uh, I'll, I'll take the moment since, uh, I'll read you, uh, what Ray sent me on the skate park tour and where they're at that. Even though you haven't heard from me in a while, be assured we're maintaining forward progress. Moving forward with the singular stall, all gender restroom on site. We think we have a good parking lot option that will still need variance. The ex, in quote exemption from lower number of parking spots from the county planning. But the wall size may be reduced, fingers crossed. We presented a couple of curb and gutter options to the county public, public works. We have received some good feedback, but still awaiting one final piece of information, which we should get sometime in the next few days. Once we get these, we should be able to finalize a permit package submittal that I will first present to the board of directors before I officially submit it to county planning. Still anticipating board meeting presentation for November seventeenth. Best, Ray. So as far as the skate park goes, that sounds pretty good. Everything moving in, uh, a forward direction. Anybody have any questions on that topic? Boom, seeing none. Anybody in the audience want to comment on any of that? I see Mr. Clark has his hand up. I'm going to allow him to talk. Mr. Clark, go right ahead.
Uh, thank you, Steve. Uh, I just wanted to give a shout out to Carlos and his folks for his, uh, work yesterday at the Pocket Park and the, uh, Creek bed. I looked at the trailer that, that they were loading trailers. They were loading at nine forty-five yesterday morning. And in there, there was a stuffed chair, a mattress, a chainsaw, and probably the most disturbing was a propane tank. Uh, I'm not sure everything else that they got, but they were done by noon and it looks very good. Also wanted to give you just an update on the schoolhouse. The exterior paint has been completed. And yesterday we, uh, reached approval of our rough inspection. So tomorrow we'll start draw, drywalling the, uh, the two rooms that we extended, the, the bathroom and the storage area. And after that, we'll install the ceiling in the schoolhouse and hopefully by the year end, we'll be done with the, uh, all the interior. And that, that's all I have, Steve.
Super. That's great news. Anybody who had any questions for Dick on any of that? Awesome. Thanks for participating. I appreciate it. Okay. That takes us into the next part of the agenda, which is public comment on anything that is not on the agenda. Does anybody have any freewheeling ideas they'd like to share? Mr. Baringer.
Steve, I know that, uh, I heard that Andrew or Jessica Scarf wanted to comment. Oh, there, I see a hand up. Okay.
Okay, there we go. I'm going to allow Mrs. Boom. There you go, Mrs. Scarf. Oh, there you go.
Hi folks, can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Hi there. Uh, my name is Jessica Scarf and, uh, I just wanted to, uh, thank you for the opportunity to, to talk to you a little bit. And what I'm going to do is just summarize a letter that my husband and I sent to the CCSD, um, late, late last month. So on September twenty-first, we, we sent a letter to the CCSD board and the general manager. The letter requested, um, relevant data supporting their decision to require all, all dogs to be on leash at all times on all areas of Fiscalini Ranch Preserve. In the discussion document that was associated with that decision, we saw the following statement. Quote, "There has been an ongoing problem with dogs not being leashed on the Fiscalini Ranch Preserve," unquote. But as we read the, um, the rest of the discussion that was associated with their decision, um, we saw the following quote. "Many potential conflicts arise from off-leash dogs. Dogs may chase wildlife. Dogs may chase cattle. Dogs may frighten or attack other people. And finally, dogs may attack other dogs." So that made us a little bit confused about whether there was in fact a verifiable ongoing problem or whether it was just a set of potentials. So we asked the CCSD if there was verifiable data to support their conclusion of an ongoing problem. Um, and if they, if they did have that, whether they would share it, and if they didn't have it, why they would make a decision without the data. Um, so we, we sent the letter and we said we looked forward first, um, to a response and, and that we hoped we were talking on behalf of the many people who treasure walking their dogs like we do at heel on the ranch. And we did, uh, receive a timely response, which we appreciated. Uh, it was on September twenty-ninth. Barely a week had passed. Um, the response was very brief and it said the following. "We have searched diligently for documents related to your public records request and we have not identified any records that are responsive." So we ask once again, um, if no relevant data exists, what was the basis for the decision? And we were also wondering why it seemed to happen so, so suddenly without, um, public input. So I just wanted to share, um, uh, that and our, our thoughts about that, um, with, uh, this group. Thanks a lot.
Ms. Scarf, thank you for your comments. Wow, okay, so, um, uh, love to think, and that's a challenging statement, and I'm not sure. I see Harry's got his hand up. I'm not sure that I want to start exploring that topic under public comment at this time, even though, uh, we, we are going to have to address that comment, right, by certain. So I guess the best thing that I can tell you, Mrs. Scarf, is by this time next month, I, I will have addressed it and that we'll have some type of public discussion on it, at least at my meeting. That's, that's the best thing I can tell you right now. Other than that, I'm going to go to Harry. Harry, what do you got?
Thank you very much, Steve. I just want to, uh, briefly thank Ms. Scarf for, uh, for attending the meeting today and doing this presentation. You might be aware of the fact, Jessica, that I was the only person that voted against, um, the dog leash ordinance, and I appreciate you following up on this and giving us this information. If you could do me a favor, um, and resend at least to me the original letter that you submitted and then the response that you got from the district, if you could do that.
Happy to do so.
All right. Thank you so much.
Mr. Baringer.
Um, yes, I suggest that, uh, when it comes to future agenda items, we do something. I think as the result of the CCSD meeting, it was pretty clear in your report, uh, Steve, and other comments, is that, uh, even though this ordinance is going along, and I'm not saying whether I'm for or against it, that's not the point. But, uh, people needed to kind of, uh, have a way to vent and, and we should take it up as something that we could look at as a pros commission. I think that's what the board wanted us to do, or I, I, it sounded like it. So I'd like to have it on a future item, so that people can, uh, discuss any, uh, variances that might occur in the future.
I agree. Any other comments on that? Adolf?
Just a comment. Uh, years ago, we used to be able to walk our dogs on the beach. But then the, uh, state parks decided that the small clover needed to exist also. And so they basically, they banned most all of, uh, all of the beaches near Cambria, except I think for Shamel Park area, uh, for having your dog in a beach. And I think, but, uh, over the years, the ranch, uh, years ago, there was a lot of activity of, of, of animals crossing or whatever, coyotes, deer, so forth and so on. And because of the, I guess, higher volume of folks, dogs, et cetera, we don't see as many as those as we used to. So basically, it's just an evolving thing. And I, I know that years ago, there was discussion about dogs on leash or not. And, uh, that has basically stayed at a static point. No one really knows how to solve this problem entirely. So anyway, that's, that's my comment.
Awesome. Anybody else have any comments? Let me suffice to say this is going to be a fine family argument that we're going to have a long discussion on and, uh, not, I, I, not that I'm happy about it, but I am interested in interesting conversations. So, uh, let's look forward to that next month. I appreciate your efforts, Mrs. Scarf. Thank you. Now I'm going to turn them. No. Oh, I'm also, hold on, let me try to get this to go away. All right. Did that do it? I see, oh, over here. Hold on, stay with me. There you go. Getting it, getting it. All right, here we go. Uh, facilities and resource, Carlos, it's you.
Yeah, good morning, everybody. Nice to see you this morning. Uh, I'll try to keep my presentation short. Um, I'll just run through a few slides. I think I just have four, four points just to share with the commission on some stuff that we are working on. See, hopefully you're able to see that. Here we go. Uh, so just a couple of things, uh, starting with the bed sole. So just a reminder to everybody, uh, as I've reported, uh, last couple of months, uh, on Saturday, the twenty-second of this month, uh, breast and pest control is going to be fumigating the entire building for termites. So we're going to have the building closed from about Saturday, the twenty-second, uh, going all the way through about Thursday of the following week. Uh, it's about a five-day process, uh, to, uh, kill the termites, both the ground, uh, termites and the termites on the building itself. So we have been working with the Legion, American Legion on the back. They have canceled all of their events, uh, during that time. Uh, also, uh, just wanted to let you know that we have submitted a grant through T-Mobile's Hometown Grant, uh, Opportunity. Uh, the, uh, T-Mobile is awarding fifty thousand dollars for communities to reviolent, reviolatize their community centers. And so we submitted a grant asking for forty-one thousand nine hundred dollars to replace the siding on the back of the building, which is mainly the American Legion side, and also to repaint the exterior of the bed sole. And just wanted to, uh, thank Kitty Connolly, uh, who helped tremendously in putting that grant together for us. Uh, as Kitty mentioned, uh, we did conduct, uh, last month, a fairly large project. Uh, it was a three-week project to remove invasive ice plant along the bluff trail on the Fiscalini Ranch. And during that work, uh, portion of the bluff trail was close to the public. Uh, work was done with, uh, some light machinery that loaded up the ice plant, uh, and hauled it away. Uh, but a vast majority of the work, as you can see here, was done by hand. Uh, mainly to work around any native plants, uh, so that we could leave as many as possible. Uh, and, uh, the crew did a fantastic job. You can see that we're wheelbarrowing a lot of the ice plant, uh, to the trail and then it was loaded up. Uh, overall, we had about six hundred yards of ice plant removed, which is about half of the trail that was worked on. And in the last two years, we've removed about three quarters of the ice plant along the Fiscalini Ranch. So tremendous, tremendous accomplishment of removing, uh, a very invasive plant. Uh, you can see in these pictures, the before on the left-hand side, and then the after on the right-hand side of all of the ice plant removed. Here's another before and after picture of all the ice plant there. So again, tremendous work. We want to thank, uh, Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch again. As Kitty mentioned, they funded the project. Uh, and overall, I think it was a, a good success. Uh, as, uh, Mr. Clark mentioned, uh, yesterday, we conducted a encampment cleanup on the Pocket Park and on, uh, Center Street. At the top left, you see the huge amount of material that was stored on the back of the property. So if you actually drove by, you wouldn't have noticed that there was, uh, an encampment on the Pocket Park. Uh, the encampment was on the backside, heavily vegetated. Um, we ended up loading about eight yards of trash and about eight yards of personal belongings that were stored on a CCSD trailer. Um, the personal belongings are here, uh, stored so that, uh, the individuals can come down and get their belongings if, if they want. A couple of the items that we did find, as was mentioned, uh, propane tanks, uh, chainsaws, gas-powered equipment there, so that's all being stored as well. Uh, interesting fact, uh, as I was, as we were doing the cleanup yesterday, we realized that we were at, we're, we are hovering at about a hundred and fifty encampment cleanups in the past three years for the department. So that's, uh, that's a significant amount of encampments that we've cleaned up. And lastly, just wanted to let everybody know that we are coordinating with the, um, County of Sallos Abyspo to provide sand for the public, uh, for the upcoming, uh, winter. Uh, if anybody needs sand, it's available at the entrance of the community park. Uh, sand is available, but not sandbags. If you, uh, need sandbags, you can go to the hardware store and purchase the sandbags there. And that is my report, and I will leave it at that, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Carlos? Harry?
Thank you, Steve. Hey, Carlos, a couple of things. First off, uh, that was a tremendous amount of, um, refuse, I guess you would say, that you found there adjacent to the Pocket Park. Um, how do you feel, um, all of that got accumulated? And why? Uh, that sounds like a dumb question. I know that. And who do you feel, what homeless people are doing something like that? And are, are they local ones that have been living here for a while, people passing through? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, unfortunately, uh, we, we've had, uh, an issue with two individuals there, uh, that have, um, been building encampments there and on neighboring properties now for years. So it's the same two individuals, uh, that we've cleaned up. Uh, they seem to, uh, for whatever reason, like to accumulate stuff, uh, very rapidly. Uh, the last time we cleaned up the Pocket Park was back in April. Uh, and about, uh, July or August, uh, when we did an inspection on it, uh, there was already a fairly large amount of stuff there. Uh, it takes a couple of months for us to be able to, uh, coordinate with the sheriff department, with a contractor to, uh, post notices to give the folks enough time to, uh, move out and get their stuff. So that's why you see a lag of, uh, about two, two months or so for us to be able to get in there and clean up.
Thank you.
Kermit?
Uh, just a question. How long do you keep it on that trailer?
Yeah, so our policy is, uh, three months, uh, ninety days, um, so we keep it here stored. Last year, the board, um, gave us some funding to build a shelter here in our facility to be able to store that and keep it out of the weather.
Kitty?
I think Adolf. Oh, um, I want to, sorry, I want to thank Carlos and Martine for tremendous work on the ice plant. Um, our, we have a vigorous invasive plant removal program and we work with service groups, particularly on ice plant, because it's fairly easy to identify. But the amount of work that was done in the last two years would have taken us, you know, like ten years to do by hand, plus who knows how many backs would have been put out running those wheelbarrows of ice plant out to the edges of the property. So thank you. Now what we need to do is collect a whole lot of seed to reseed those plants, reseed those areas.
Thank you, Kitty. Adolf?
Uh, just a comment. Uh, we were in San Luis a couple, three, four weeks ago and noticed that, uh, there was a lot of cleanup being done by, uh, I, I guess, the San Luis folks on an area that's not too far from, uh, the, uh, the, one of the shopping centers. And I, I wonder whether or not the county, I guess, is, is actually counting, why, looking at cleaning up the homeless camps. Does Carlos, Carlos, do you know that?
Well, I know the county has a, uh, very ambitious, uh, plan. It's a five-year plan that they just came up with, uh, to, um, basically cut homeless, uh, by half in the county. Uh, now, most of that is centered around, um, providing shelter, place for people to go, mental health, all that stuff. Uh, very little, if any, is going to actual, uh, encampment cleanups. So, um, probably what you saw there is the actual property owners, uh, whether it's, uh, the city of Sloan and having their parks or their, uh, areas that they, um, own and oversee. They're probably the ones that were, uh, overseeing the cost on those.
Uh, I believe there were people who were actually in uniform who were doing that cleanup.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not really aware of that, uh, actual cleanup that happened there, so I'm not, uh, I can't really answer your question, I guess.
Yeah, it's not too far from Trader Joe's, actually. Okay.
Any other comments? Not that I want to belabor this point either, but all that work that Carlos is doing is casting somebody money and we got no way to pay for it. So I just want to say thank you, Carlos, for that. And I'm amazed at your stoic process for doing your job and how unemotional you can be and not exasperated. And so as you, as I say, you're hovering around a hundred and fifty, uh, encampment cleanups. I'm, I, I've been with you and I've watched you do them and I sympathize with you. And I'm watching that new county plan with earnest and, um, if, I hope it works, and if it does, then we all need to pay attention and to participate. Uh, Jim and Kermit, I see your hands up now. Are we going to belabor this?
No.
Go ahead.
Just, I, I'm. Comment to, to, uh, Carlos, great video stuff that you do with that drone and so forth, and really makes it easy to understand. Thanks a lot.
I agree with that. Jim?
Yes, I'm going to belabor it a little bit. Uh, we need to find funding for this kind of thing. And, uh, the CCSD as a district should not be spending so much money on this. Uh, Kitty Connolly is fantastic, is trying to find grants from different places. I think the board itself, the, a recommendation from this committee to the board is to continue to find, um, sources of funding for this type of effort. Uh, Carlos is doing a great job. We need, uh, we need either grants or a relief from the, the district itself, relief from having expending money on this kind of project. I'm just, I'm just trying to reiterate our, um, suggestion to the board is that, uh, we need funding sources for this kind of effort. It shouldn't, uh, our rate payer shouldn't be paying for this.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else? All right. Ooh, done with that one. All right. We're on to the consent agenda, correct? Perfect. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the September sixth meeting?
Steve, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave because I'm not feeling well.
Right on.
Okay, bye.
See you, sweetie. Uh, Kermit, go ahead. Oops, can't hear you.
Make a motion, approve the minutes.
He's making a motion to approve the minutes from September. Adolf seconds? All in favor, say aye. All right. Okay, minutes passed. All right, now, um, discussion on considerations for major products or major projects for the community park. Uh, Carlos, do you want to start this one?
Uh, sure, I'll start it unless, uh, Kermit, uh,
Kermit?
Yeah, I see him shaking his head, so. All right, I'll, I'll take the lead on it. Um, so the item in front of you is a continuation of last month's ad hoc report on the community park projects. Uh, in last month, the ad hoc committee that, uh, consisted of, um, Kermit, uh, Joyce and assisted by myself, we presented to the pros commission, uh, two lists for consideration. And assisted by myself, we presented to the post commission uh two lists for consideration. Uh, list number one uh consisted of four options of viable projects. And these were projects that uh we all thought were uh low cost to no cost, easy to implement. And at the end of last month's meeting, the pros commission voted to. Present to the C C S D board, three of those projects, which were benches, trash enclosures. And a delineation of a trail. But the pros commission wanted to discuss list number two at today's pros meeting and that's what you see in front of you. Uh, and as part of the packet. Uh, so list number two is a list of the major projects for the community park. Uh, and let me see if I can. Share uh that list and maybe as I go along, uh, we can. Look and discuss. There we go. So list number two uh is a list of the major projects for the community park. Uh, the list includes a description of each of the projects, uh, the size and also the current status of each of those projects. Uh, one of the things that uh I wanted to do uh was revise this a little bit and add to it. To make it a complete project list. So the difference between this list and the list that you saw last month was that I added four projects. That weren't included on that list. That is the dog park. Grading, drainage and swales. The demolition of the Phillips residence and also the removal of eucalyptus trees. Again, this is mainly to have a complete list of all the projects that have happened there. A lot of these have already been completed. But wanted to provide the community and pros with at least with a complete list of those projects again. Each one of these projects uh that's on this list has already gone through extensive community input. Environmental reviews and it's included in the uh Fiscalini Ranch Coastal Development Permit. Uh, and I think one of the things that uh we wanna keep in mind is that uh. One of the main hurdles that has been stopping us from having. Um, these projects go forward is the restroom project. And as we all know, the restroom project is currently uh moving forward. We have funding for that restroom and are looking to. Possibly build uh the restroom next summer. So once that restroom is completed, it opens up the door for these other projects to uh move forward. Uh, one of the benefits for uh the pros commission to select one of these projects or projects. Project or projects is uh that it allows us to. Move forward and get these projects shovel ready. So whenever funding sources come about, uh whether it's grants or whatever else. Uh, we can easily apply for those projects. Right now, none of these projects that are pending. Have that shovel ready um um thing to them. Uh, the next phase to each one of these projects that are pending is to. Uh, do a final design, cost estimate and actual, actual construction plans for it. So as just a starting point for discussion, the ad hoc committee uh provided their recommendation for the top three projects. As you could call it phase three of the community park and those three items were the multi-use sports fields. The trail system and then the native landscape is number three. Uh, so I think I'll leave it at that and I'll shut, I'll stop sharing and if Kermit wants to add anything from there. I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
All right, does anybody have anything they wanna add to that? Jim? Can't hear ya.
Hang on, okay. Uh, yeah, I think that one of the things we were talking about is a, is a path. That went around the entire uh perimeter of. The park. And I think that was something you could do even maybe without uh. Restrooms. And I didn't see that highlighted as one of the uh projects. It seems like something we do right away and I think Kermit uh thought it was a good idea. Uh, so I think that, I don't know, add that to the list or define it more so that we can. Do something, actually do something. That would be fun.
Yeah, and uh so that's actually already included in uh last month's uh recommendation to the board. Uh, it was. Picnic tables, trash cans, and then the, the delineation of that trail, which is exactly what you're mentioning. Uh, we don't need uh permit. It's just mainly to uh rough out that um. That uh circle type trail that goes around, um, and that's part of something we're, we're planning on doing soon.
Okay, and uh Carlos, am I mistaken that you are not allowed to, to develop a trail on the rest of the property? Towards the, towards the highway? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what we discussed uh at uh last month's uh meeting is that the um. The plan for the Fiscalini Ranch doesn't call for any improvements of that trail past the community park. Um, and so past that, it wouldn't be any improvements. Uh, the community park plan calls for a meandering trail, which is basically ADA accessible. Um, decomposed granite type of a trail system.
Okay, and not to belabor this point, but if I wanted to build that ADA trail all the way around the rest of that property. Could that be done if I asked the Fiscalini Ranch people or is that like set in stone?
Uh, I think one of the main hurdles that uh uh we have to get uh through. If we want to develop the rest of that trail, which is past the community park, uh is the fact that, as we discussed last month. Uh, access across the highway is a big, big issue there. Um, obviously, right now we just have makeshift. Uh, pedestrian branch with no real access across it. In fact, we really don't have. Permission from, from Caltrans to even go through that. So that's really a main.
Any movement that way would be viewed as negative?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, gotcha. Perfect. Uh, Adolf, what do you got?
Just to comment, uh, so that the trail that we're talking about is this, is this to go from the community park, let's say, to go across. Highway one somewhere. And, and, and is it, for example, would you put a trail? Where the little bridge goes over, I guess, from when you, when you go from Main Street to the park, there's a little bridge there. If you stayed on the. Uh, Main Street side, would you have a trail that would go all the way around? I guess to the bank or whatever, or close to it, or to that light on the uh. Let's say the light there on the highway, it's like, it uh. Not name, excuse.
Yeah, no, he said.
But if that's it or something else.
The trail is just gonna stay on the property that is the East Ranch Park. So it's just gonna stay in that little circle.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, any other questions? Okay, so basically what we've done here is we said, these are the major projects. Cause there was some misunderstanding of what we are and where we're going. Those are the major projects. We don't have to necessarily do them in order, but they're there for us to look at. We've now got another set of simple projects, right? Picnic tables, trash cans and getting that trail going. Don't need permits for that. So once the bathroom's going, we can kinda hit pretty hard on that. Is that correct? Is that a good summarization of where we're at? Kermit, you comfortable with that?
The, the. Yes, the, the, I, you know, but I don't see if, frankly, I don't see a future for the, a lot of the stuff we have, like the. Uh, playing fields, just because. Golfers and grass. Um, we, we just don't. It, it's what it is and we, we can open it up, whatever, we can discuss it at that time.
That's a longer discussion or another time. In fact, I'm wondering if it's possible to play on dirt. So that's a weird thing to say too.
Yeah.
Right, but anyway, uh, okay, any other questions? I'm gonna turn it over to the public. I see Mr. Calderwood has. His hand raised and I'm gonna allow him to talk.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Um, just a quick question, uh, the, 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 the trail definition and uh. The picnic tables and the trash cans, does that require the bathroom before we can do that? I, and, and my thinking is that trail's already there. It's just more formalizing it. Picnic tables, there's one or two there already now. And trash cans, why would you need a permit for trash? So that's my question. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a great question. I was thinking the same thing. Carlos, what do you gotta say to that?
Yeah, I think we're talking about uh two, two different projects, two different lists. Uh, and I think that's probably the confusion. So last month. Uh, the projects that we looked at were the uh benches, the trash can and that very rough delineation of the trail. None of those require permits. Uh, so those were things that the ad hoc looked into that we could do now to improve. Um, you know, people's participation enjoyment of that, that part of the ranch. Uh, you see picnic tables out there because we already sort of implemented those faces already of the trash can and the, and the picnic tables. The next thing to go in there is that delineation of that trail and we could work on that. Uh, as mentioned last month, uh with uh in-house or with volunteers to get that done. So we took care of that last, last month. This month, we're looking at the major projects. Uh, which are the ones that will require a permit. They will require uh somebody to uh be hired to do. A this, a final design and construction permits.
Yeah, I think Mr. Calderwood was kind of also asking, we could start making that trail without the bathroom being built. Is that true?
So we're not, we're not making any improvements to, to the trail. We're, we gotta be careful. About uh improving the trail. Once you start improving the trail, which is uh adding decomposed granite, making it ADA accessible. Uh, that all kicks in permits. A lot of these uh projects have gone through extensive environmental impact reports. And so in those reports, uh, it strictly says, as soon as you start um. Making improvements, you have to get a permit to be able to do that.
So we're basically being patient.
We're, we're, we're doing as much as we can. Uh, with the funds that we have and the limited resources, uh, and then we're looking at these major projects. To try to get them shovel ready whenever there's funding available.
Okay, perfect. Carlos, thank you. Harry, what do you got?
I just wanted to mention, Steve, that uh there is a porta potty, if I'm not mistaken, a porta potty out there near the dog park. Now, couldn't that be used for people that are gonna be using the picnic tables? I mean, that'd be available for that, right?
We have some picnic tables out there. What I'm hearing Carlos saying is let's just wait until we get those bathrooms built and then we can go. Is that correct, Carlos?
Yeah, so um, you know, as I've reported in the past, that porta potty is being um provided with no charge by Harvey Sunny Huts. They were gracious enough to be able to do that. Uh, and. Uh, it's just a temporary restroom. Uh, really, it's not ADA um accessible.
Okay.
Um, so it's just providing a service until the actual restroom uh is there.
Right, that's understand.
Anybody else have any questions on that particular topic? Awesome. Kermit, thank you for your hard work. Carlos, thank you for your. Overbearing knowledge. And that takes us, oops, all right, I'm, I see uh the Schwartz's would like to make a comment. I'm gonna allow them to talk. Go ahead.
Uh, good morning. I just had a quick comment based on that last conversation about the porta potties. They make ADA accessible porta potties, so, so that's not an issue if you wanna go that way. And uh, and Laura has a comment, I think.
Yes, good morning, uh, commission. I would just curious, at the C C S D meetings, they always let us know who else is out here because we can't tell. Can you just tell us who else is permitting, Steve?
Yes, I'm sorry about that. Uh, the two of you are there, Michael Calderwood. David Pearson, Jeff Wilson and Michael Thomas.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, that takes us into our next topic. If we're all good with that, we're gonna go into discussion and consideration. For the Center Street property and multipurpose trails in uh Cambria. I think this is kind of uh not necessarily, that looks like that's already a done deal, but it's more about the multipurpose trails. Kermit, would you like to comment on this?
Hey, Steve, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't mean to uh uh stop you in, in the middle of.
Oh, please do.
Did, did we actually finish the, the last uh uh item? Um, are you making a recommendation to the board or are you?
Oh, on, on a?
On a project or projects or are you wishing to move this to next month for further discussion or?
We, we refer to, we, we're, we're supposed to propose to the board that list if that was recommended.
Okay, okay, that's not an old list that they've already got?
That was the first list. This is the second list.
This is the second list with uh the um. Projects and uh the ad hoc is uh providing the pros commission their recommendation for the next phase.
Gotcha.
Which is either the multi-use sports fields, the trail system or the native landscape or any other of. The projects that are still pending. Uh, but I guess my point was, are you wishing to recommend to the board one of these projects as phase three? So that we can ask for the funding for the. Uh, final design of it. If you wish to move this forward, uh, we could do that. If you wish to discuss it further at next pros meeting, I guess we can do that as well. But I just wanted to provide some, some guidance there so that we, we just don't lose the.
We, we can vote on it at this meeting if it, to me, it's not a very controversial thing.
I, I moved it.
I propose we forward the recommendation of yes, uh, to the. C C S D board uh of the proposed list of actions as submitted by Carlos.
I'll second that.
Everybody good with that? All in favor, say aye.
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 Can I make additional comment?
No, we're done. You can't do that. All right, go ahead. Just cause you're my buddy. Go ahead.
And so that now, now, next week or next month, we can talk about the design and, and what, what the. Final designs are, et cetera, et cetera. But at least we're moving forward with something and I think Carlos is suggesting that. We move forward with this list. Now let's start working on that list and make sure we get the design right, et cetera. So.
Yeah, that's correct. And I think next month, uh, Commissioner Behringer. I would, uh, I would say when we get down to uh uh future agenda items. So the pros commission has in their budget for this year about nineteen thousand dollars. Uh, that uh the pros commission can recommend to the board to hire a consultant to provide us with the final, final design. Construction plans, cost estimate for uh one of those projects.
One of the major projects, not one of the minor projects.
Major projects, yes.
All right, there's no money for the major projects. I'm like, all right, I, I guess we're. Uh, okay.
There, there is no, there is no money for it, but we're trying to get the shovel ready when grant funding comes around.
And, and we don't know what the costs are either. So that's the other purpose, the next step.
Adolf, are you comfortable?
Well, I was thinking that I, I guess. If we're going to go ahead with things like the sports fields, et cetera, or suggest the sports field. Then somehow we have to get. You know, what's required in order for us to actually start that project? And who's gonna do that?
I think that's what we do, that we, we're gonna need to get a design and then figure out what the cost is. Now we can, if we have it shovel ready. Then we can go to the, the county really is, the parks has budget and other people have budgets. So um. Don't be afraid of them, of the money necessarily. We at least have to get in line so that we can accept a, a. A grant.
So, so do we have to have a request for proposal then from anyone who might be interested in doing it? Or can we assign somebody to do it under a certain amount of money?
I, I think what Carlos said is that, hey, let's get in, let's get a consultant for the design so that we can come up with a general budget and. Make sure any permits are, are um in line. And I think that's what we're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, we have yet to get, we couldn't theoretically do that right now without the C C S D board approval. So that's what we're going for.
Right.
Okay, any other comments? Carlos, are you comfortable?
Um, oh yeah, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable. I think just one last uh, comment. And maybe something for you to keep in mind, maybe the public that uh, is keeping an eye on this project. Uh, so when we did the phase one project, rating drainage, uh, parking lot, uh, dog park, uh, Civil Design Studios, myself and the county, we worked on a roadmap for the rest of these projects to fall into place.
Yeah.
So there is a, the county is aware, we're aware, when, whenever one of these projects comes up and we want to accomplish them, we already know what those steps are, and the county already knows what those checks are. So it'll make it a lot easier, or it has made it a lot easier now, uh, to start implementing those other, other phases.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't want to be exasperated, but I'm just like, we don't have any way of taking care of any of the things on the list. Even if we got the money to build it, we don't have any way to take care of it. And that's where I'm just like, ah. Alright, that's why I'm like, let's just get some picnic tables. Even the play structure, if we put a play structure out there, it's gonna be so much work for you to take care of the play structure. And I'm just but anyway, so I guess it's longer discussion next month, and like Jim says, that's what we're here for.
Yeah, I think that longer discussion is, is great. Uh, you know, when I got involved with the community park, it was we don't have the money to be able to maintain those items, but let's partner with different groups so that we can get those groups to fund, get those groups to maintain. So we, we now have the, for example, a dog park. We now have a group that is maintaining it, that is doing the maintenance, that is doing the fundraising. So that, you know, that saves the CCSD from that burden. I think it would be the same uh, for the sports fields is those folks, those groups that are involved, that would like that. Uh, that's the conversation we can have with them at that point. But right now, all we're trying to do is to move one of these projects to that shovel ready, and then we can talk about maintenance and the rest of that stuff.
Just, just, just a, just a question. What you're talking about, I guess would be similar to the Friends of Fiscally Ranch Preserve taking care of it, sure. They have volunteers to do certain things. They raise money, I guess, to get certain projects taken care of. Is that what you're suggesting? A similar situation, a similar group?
I'm saying we have to keep our options open to whatever, whatever is, is out there to be able to maintain, uh, to build, uh, whether it's volunteers, uh, whether it's groups, whether it's partnerships, what, whatever, whatever it is, uh, we can have that conversation as, as each one of these, these things moves forward. Again, some people may be more involved and interested in uh, sports fields than they are in landscaping, so it all depends on what projects we're moving forward.
So, so the bottom line really is, is that how to finance what we want to do.
Yes. Right, anybody else? That's depressing, huh? But good, we gotta keep banging away on it, and the more we talk about it, the more likely it is something's gonna crack and we'll figure it out. So I appreciate everybody being involved. Alright, now we're gonna move on to the next one. Is that correct? Which is uh, permit and discussion of the uh, multipurpose trails.
Okay, um, we had, um, two things were happening here. Uh, one is, uh, as you know, I have have some proposals out there on some trail locations on page uh, five of my supplemental. If we all kind of turn to that, um, uh, go past the major projects, go down to the uh, scroll down to your, your uh, the letter submission that I put in there. I think it's exhibit six B is what they've got labeled on there. So, basically, we, we, we approached the, our group, the Bi- Cambria Bicycle Alliance, approached the uh, uh, Historical Society to see if they cooperate with us putting, you know, the concept of, of, of kind of aneasement for the uh, trail across the creek, the bridge and so forth. And uh, basically, they weren't particularly interested. This had, this culminates at the time when the CCSD has decided they would go ahead and um, make a memorandum of, of understanding for the sale of the Vestpocket Park, or I call it Vestpocket Park. It's the piece on Center Street, uh, Bridge Street, uh, homeless shelter, so to speak. And the, to sell to the Historical Society for five thousand dollars. And the Historical Society wants to purchase it because they can control it. They can control the uh, issue of who's on their property. They can sign that they can throw people off, and they have other plans to buy other properties in there. They weren't particularly interested in, in dealing with us, uh, just because of the uh, uh, they want to go their own way. They figure if they're, it's their money, we got nothing. They do. Uh, and the issue is, is, you know, they don't need more encumbrances. However, it is public land. It's a key point of, of, once we lose that public land, we lose all control over it theoretically. If you look at their plan, the uh, they're, they're saying the nineteen ninety-four plan of re- the master plan for the pros commission, the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, nineteen ninety-four, there is that East Village Historic Park that has, and that's on the exhibit, uh, page, whatever, the sixteen of, of your handout of the, of the thing, on page three of mine, I think. Anyway, it's the East Village Historic Park, and in that, it shows their proposed master plan from nineteen ninety-four, which they're intending to progress, and they put the jail on the, the Vestpocket Park area, and uh, uh, other owns what other lands, creek lands essentially. It's all covered in, in trees and creek and pretty much controlled by other agencies, federal agencies. Uh, so, but they're intending to move forward with that. Uh, we've sort of been trying to influence the CCSD in a manner of a consideration that they put an easement across there for us. Uh, we've had some discussion with, one of our members had discussion with the leader of this uh, uh, Historical Society, the past president, I think. Uh, and he said, you know, we don't, we're just, we want to proceed on our own way. We want to do our own thing. We want to establish the old Stagecoach Road that came from Bridge Street across the creek, not on a, not on a bridge, but just on surface crossing. Um, cross where the existing hardware store is now, then up the hill in the place location, we had our proposed trail, uh, which is right below the historic park. If you look on the exhibit there, it's uh, my page, my page five and their, their page seventeen, uh, sixteen, I guess, also. So anyway, the that is the proposal for kind of a public walkway. Uh, we would like to have it considered, recommended to the CCSD that it, they, we can, that frankly, if they didn't want to put an easement in, if they wanted to sell the land, which I, I don't, I wouldn't want to stand in the this path of the Historical Society when they've got a, uh, they've got money, they've got a mission, and they got people who are sort of dedicated to this purpose and doing well. Uh, however, the future goes for them, I think it'll, they'll probably be fairly successful. Uh, wha- whatever, yeah. But they've also have volunteers who have money who will purchase land, and it's, I think it's good for the community. That even though the community is losing it. But I would like to propose that the because that is a key piece of creek control for public access, if we're ever going to go across to Tin City, which to me is a smart idea, and then connect up with the trail coming down the hill on the the old portion carrying the, the students down to meet another trail down at the bottom of the hill somewhere that's going to go to the high school, out to the high school. That's, again, that's in our master plan on the uh, uh, nineteen ninety-four plan. Is, if you go back to that, the, the county shows it in their recreation plan uh, proposed, uh, using Santa Cre- Rosa Creek as the backbone of the trail out to the high school. The nineteen ninety-four, that's the current Cambria plan for the county. And that's also shows a walkway down from the mid, middle school down. We'd be more coming down to another drainage, the grove next to the, uh, Burton Drive, but it is the old Stagecoach that we're proposing for this use, not another piece of land further out. Uh, I'm not even sure who that belongs to. So anyway, that's what I would like to see is that the city charge, instead of giving, saying, give them an easement across, charge of the county, the uh, make it a condition of the that the CCSD make a condition of the sale of the land that they complete their plan as described on page sixteen of your handout there, uh, that they put that bridge in it, or then build a, a crossing for public access to the city on the old Stagecoach Road to complete the uh, remainder of the plant. That if they didn't want to deal with us and get, sort of give us an easement, then charge the, make a recommendation in the, in the memorandum of purchase. Memor- memorandum of agreement for the purchase of the land uh, by the Historical Society, that they be responsible for crossing the creek and connecting with other public throughways. Is that confusing, or is that quite clear? And Harry, if you, does that sound about what you were thinking about? Or the, you weren't thinking about, but had talked about, I think, with the Historical Society. I know you were involved.
Be honest with you, Kermit, I don't think that I'm in a position to kind of answer uh, your query right now. That's probably something that would need to be addressed to John Ellers. He's the former president of the Historical Society, but he's the major person uh, pursuing the development, you know, of um, the area around Bridge Street as a historical area.
Yes, and, but the city, I, wherever I'm recommending that we recommend, that the pros commission recommend that the sale of the uh, Center Street land be conditioned with the fact that they are story, cross the creek uh, on the historic trail of the old Stagecoach Road, and uh, for public access to connect with uh, access coming down the bridge for Burton Drive area.
Adolf?
Uh, just, just a question. So I guess what, what, what you're talking about, huh, is, is to basically get an easement through the property that the Historical Society would now own to allow us to have a trail that goes to the creek or across the creek. But after that, you talk about going to the junior high school and going through private property. How many private property owners are actually in the way of the trail they want to make?
Great.
And so each of them, you'd have to actually sign and get a sign easement through their property to do it.
Yes, there's, there's one, one party that has said that they probably could make that happen.
Yeah, this is a, an act of, I, I lived in an area where we had an easement from a housing project to basically a school. And it, it had some problems. The problem was, is that who's gonna clean it? How are you gonna keep people, how are they going to fence off so that people don't go into the private property, so forth and so on? So there was a cost involved.
That, that's a good question. Don't have it answered. Then, you know, this is just a proposal with this little piece of paper over here, blue, a trail going down it. But if you don't allow for, for it, you'll never need that answer that question. It's not gonna be easy, and it's gonna be a lot of um, a lot of public work. I don't know. I, and, and that's, that's the thing. You, there's a thousand questions against it, or a thousand points against it. Uh, all correct, and um, one little skinny proposal on a piece of paper. And I don't know where else you would begin, but start with a concept and keep working till you find all the answers.
Well, uh, okay. So what are you asking us to do right now?
I'm asking the pros commission to make a recommendation. There, the, the, they, this is where the where I understand it, this is where the uh, CCSD has asked the pros commission to look at this issue and for a recommendation, because you had made that statement, you would have had to ask the uh, the, the president of the, the board to, the pros commission be allowed to review that type of thing, should have been reviewed before they stepped ahead, but they're in the memorandum of consider, memorandum of agreement for consideration of sale to the Historical Society. It, it's, they are drafting their conditions for the sale. And I'm asking for the, one of the conditions to the sale is that they charge uh, the Historical Society for the bridge for a crossing of the creek as they propose in this plan. Wherever it goes across for connection to public access on the other side.
I, I sec- I second that.
Okay, let's assume that was a motion. Was that a? Is that a motion, Kermit?
Yeah, sure.
Alright, I understood it to be a motion. Alright, Jim has seconded, and now we can have a little more discussion on that motion. So what you're saying is, is that the CCSD is getting ready to get rid of this property and sell it, and you want one of the conditions of the sale to be that we can build a bridge over it someday?
Either, let's say, so, we charge the Historical Society, which wants to do it themselves, and for their control of their property, that they do the trail, the connection and bridge crossing.
I don't know, I don't know if that's what I'm, I don't know if that's what I seconded.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm thinking that we recommend to the um, to the CCSD that they uh, have a condition on the sale that a easement to uh, for a trail be included as uh, a requirement of their purchase.
That would, that would be fine, but I didn't think we'd get that, because the, the uh, Historical Society said they want to own, they want to do their own thing.
They can, yeah, I, I think they can do their own thing, but, but um, we don't, we don't, we don't force them to spend any money or or uh, we just, the property becomes private property to them, and we, we as a community want to have a, an easement if and when we, or somebody, uh, no charge to the historical district, but we, but
I would go along with that, amend that my motion to uh, comply with your, your concept.
You know, and, and not only that, if we make that suggestion, and for some reason it's, it's rejected, fine, at least, at least the suggestion is there, and I think we should make that suggestion.
Yes.
As a pros commission.
Harry, do you want to weigh in on that?
I really don't know what to add to this at this time. Like I said, I feel that this kind of proposal needs to be run by uh, by John Ellers, um. Considering that what you're, what you're doing is making the sale conditional on, on uh, this particular item. Um, I have no idea how they would feel about that, although knowing how passionate John is about developing the entire area, um, as we were discussing as a historical area, I would imagine that he'd probably be acceptable to this because of his overall vision moving forward, but I can't speak for him. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, um, I don't want to do anything to hinder anything, and I, you know, I'm, I'm a fool for trusting people. I've been told that a number of times, but I just trust the Historical Society. I don't think they're gonna stop anything that the rest of us want to occur. Now we're in the future. I just do, I think uh, what they want is best. I, and so I hesitate to vote on something that makes us want to I hesitate to vote on something that makes us want to bind the CCSD and the Historical Society to something, I would be much more idea in something that we like this idea and this concept and want it to be acknowledged more so than it needs to be in written paper in the document.
Steve, if I could just interject, you know, I, I kind of agree with you. Perhaps what I should do is contact John Ellers and let him know about this discussion and see how he feels, and I can, I can go back to you.
Yeah, I, I guess we're all, and let me see if I can synopsize it by saying, hey, we're all into it, we want the Historical Society to have it, but we just want the community and everybody to start thinking that, hey, we are conceptualizing some type of movement across this property over to the Tin City. Is that true? That that would help us move people around the community a little bit better, getting them off the roads, getting them on the bikes, and somehow doing what our commission is?
Steve, I see somebody raising their hand, little eight oh five, two oh three, five, one, three, four.
Perfect, I'm gonna go ahead and let them in, hopefully they got an answer for us. Go ahead, welcome and identify yourself, please. Oh, maybe they got.
Steve, I, I missed that, were you talking to us? This is Crosby.
Oh, yeah, I thought we saw your hand raised.
Well, no, it was raised.
Go ahead then.
After our last comment, after our last comment, we were blocked, we were removed from the webinar by the host and blocked from rejoining, and I just wondered if that was intentional or accidental.
Yeah, what was seriously accidental on my part? Okay, so I guess I hit the mute button then and not remove, oh, I was removing, gotcha.
Well, that worked. It, it's okay, we're, we're listening by phone now, so we're, we're good, I just wanted you to be aware that you had blocked us from the meeting.
Well, you missed out on another half an hour of us rattling around about nothing, I'm sorry. We didn't.
No, 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 we're, we're.
While you were gone.
No, we're, we're, we're good, we're good.
All right, so I'm gonna mute you then, right? And he's still with us, that's correct, right?
Why would you mute him? Wasn't he trying to make a statement?
No, I think he was just getting back in.
I had to ask him, I thought he, he's got his hand up.
Yeah. Okay.
Crosby, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you, and maybe you can hear us, but we're, we're, we're on the phone, we're not seeing any pictures or anything. I'll, I'll try to log back in on the, you know, with the computer and to see how that works, but I'm sorry to interrupt what you're going, continue, and, and we're good.
I'm finding it all fascinating.
Yes, it is. Well, at least, at least now you know how to block people, remove them and block them from the meeting, so.
Yeah, right, should my wife try to get in, I'll just block her. All right, okay, back to the discussion on the bridge. Adolf, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just, just a question. Is there a public easement along both sides of the creek now?
Not the limo.
So that the public can't just walk along the creek regardless?
No, but, not that I'm worried, unless you know something I don't.
No, no, I just, I was just curious whether there was, like, somebody feet from the, whatever, center of the creek out, it may be a public access area.
You know, it's just in somebody's backyard.
Yeah, and not that I want to weigh in on public property rights in America, but we as kids were always told that if you're in the stream, that's public property, if you're on the edges of the bank, that's private property. But then I was also told you're not supposed to be in the Santa Rosa Creek bed because it's protected habitat.
Probably true.
But the, the idea, if you have a bridge, you're gonna need to have someplace to attach it onto the private property, that's all. An easement should be very simple, nobody's gonna care about it. And, and you don't have to define it, it'll last forever, it's just that you have an opportunity at some time, they or us could, could do it, it, we'll see, anyway, I think, I still stick with my recommendation that the CCSD consider including an easement on the bank.
Okay, so, so Jim, let's say this, Jim, let's, if, if Kermit will remove his last motion, he's gonna, we're gonna go, Jim, do you want to state that again as your motion?
I believe, I think we should suggest to the CCSD that on, on set, on the sale of the property, that the community retains an easement for public access across the creek.
Okay, that's the motion, do we get a second for that?
Second.
Kermit, seconds, any more discussion on that? All right, seeing none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, perfect, okay. Motion carries, we'll take that to the board. All right, that, and let me see if I can even find the agenda, I believe that gets us to the end of the agenda, doesn't it?
That's one more item, I think.
I think that's it.
No, you're right. Major discussion, consideration parks, projects, which we did with Carlos, and discussion, consideration of Center Street property of multiple purpose trails.
There we go.
Okay, can I, can I suggest a future agenda item?
Yes, go right ahead.
Since I see that we have four attendees out there. I'm wondering if we should have a, a meeting in public, in other words, we actually go back to really meeting someplace, and maybe have it as a hybrid meeting, but not, don't do these on Zoom anymore, and I, I know that when we, when the CCSD has meetings, and people are allowed to be in the, in the, in the audience, and they can see each other, and they have expressions, and they talk, and it's much more, much more valid of public input than somebody on over here with a little cross through their phone or whatever, and, and when, when they talk, you don't see them, you don't understand, you don't, you don't interpret what they're saying. So I'm, I'm suggesting that we have a, a regular, go back to public meetings, and we meet at the, that's all, or wherever, and, and, and then we bring it in, bring in Zoom too, for somebody that can't come or doesn't want to, anyways, anyway, I think we should have public meetings, that's my suggestion.
Perfect, I don't know how I would mute somebody at a public meeting, that'll be a problem. Okay, so we will consider that, I think we, Harry, don't we have to follow the CCSD board's protocol on that?
I, I, I really don't know, Steve. I don't know whether it's something you can determine on your own, or that, sorry about this, that the district has to approve. I can check on that before you can get back to.
Yeah, all right, perfect, anything else on future agenda items? Awesome, perfect, go ahead.
Weren't we going to now take up, now that we've submitted this list of projects, and we are going to get a RFP for detailed studies of the top priorities that we approved earlier today, that we should discuss it and move on a budget on having the design done, so I think that that should be discussed. Now, you can, Steve, you can put that on the agenda anyway, it's.
Yeah, this is on detailed costs for the major projects.
Yes.
I think maybe funding for top project for the community park.
Okay.
Funding for final design of a project for the community park.
Okay. All right, that looks like that's about it, other than the fact I was supposed to have somebody take minutes for this meeting. So how did that go? Terry, did you get all the minutes down? Perfect.
Are you kidding? I didn't join except a half an hour ago.
All right, there is a way for, I, I can, I will do the minutes up of this thing, I, I can re-watch this meeting, can't I somehow, Jim?
Right, it's, it's being recorded, yes.
Took me forever to get on, oh my gosh.
Good, well, we'll have public meetings again, that'll be good.
Yay.
Drive there.
Okay.
All right, I love everybody, thank you, we're gonna adjourn.
Hi, guys.
Right on, thank you.